Councillor, Councillor Molton.
Here.
Councillor Labarge.
Here.
Councillor Dobbs.
Here.
And Councillor Rothenberg is not present. I think she's not expected either.
She has prior work commitments which have kept her from joining us today, so I do not expect Councillor Rothenberg here. This meeting is being audio and video recorded. First order of business is to elect a permanent chair for this term for city services, so I will take nominations. Councillor Labarge?
Yes, I nominate Stan Molton as Chair of City Service.
Are there any further nominations? Okay, I will accept a nomination and say that I believe that I have the time, the knowledge, the organizational skills to keep this committee running efficiently. My leadership style is collaborative, so I want to ensure that everyone who wants to be heard, members of the committee, other councillors, other city officials, and particularly the public are given that opportunity. And I appreciate your confidence in me, so I will now close the nominations. And Laura, if you would call the role and councillors state the name of the person you prefer for chair or abstain.
Councillor Molton.
Councillor Molton.
Councillor Labarge.
Councillor Molton.
And Councillor Dobbs.
Councillor Molton.
That passes three, zero. Thank you. I appreciate that. Next order of business is to elect the vice chair, and I will nominate Councillor Labarge as vice chair for this term.
Thank you.
Are there any, are there any further nominations? Councillor Labarge?
Yes, I am very privileged to take the position as a vice chair of City Service. I've done this committee, which used to be Social Services, for many, many years, and it gives me a break from that title. So yes, I will accept that nomination. Plus the fact I have a lot of experience with mostly all the committees that I've been on.
And I will, I will simply say that I appreciate your willingness to serve, Councillor Labarge, and I will draw upon your vast experience. You are the only one of the four of us who has served on city services, so I think we will be a good partnership team. Much appreciated. Laura, would you call the role, please, and state, councillor, state your preference for vice chair?
Councillor Labarge.
Councillor Labarge.
Councillor Dobbs.
Councillor Labarge.
And Councillor Molton.
Councillor Labarge. Okay, Councillor Labarge, you are elected vice chair. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, councillors.
Okay, so the next up is any public comment? I see no one else on the call, so I don't think we have any public comments. We have minutes of two prior meetings from last term. One is the last meeting of City Services, December 4th, 2023, and then one was February 16th, 2023, that was inadvertently overlooked. And that was a meeting that Councillor Labarge was not present at, and the only business there was one referral to the City Council, which I know did occur. So it's not required that that you have attended those meetings to approve the minutes. So, Councillor Labarge, did the minutes of December, the December 4th meeting seem fine to you?
Yes.
Okay.
Both of the minutes, February 16th, 2023, and December 4th, 2023, I moved to approve those minutes.
Is there a second? Okay, thank you. Laura, call the role, please. We'll take these as a group
on approving the February 16th and December 4th, 2023 meeting, minute, meeting minutes. Thank you.
Councillor Dobbs.
Yes, I approve.
Councillor Molton.
Yes.
And Councillor Labarge.
Yes.
Okay, that is approved unanimously. Thank you. All right, so we have one referral that we're taking up today. That was the referral of three candidates for city boards and commissions. In this case, it is David Ames for the Parks and Recreation Commission, and Jennifer Hollins and Kit Pedraza for the Arts Council. Those were referred to us on the January 4th meeting. And just by way of background, and Councillor Labarge, you can fill in anything I missed. There are multiple avenues for presenting information to the, to the City Services Committee about candidates for appointments. One, of course, is the, the application form that they fill out themselves, and that was part of the referral to the, from the full council. So you should have their applications. Traditionally, in recent time, the City Services Committee has assigned a member to interview each candidate at a time that is mutually convenient for that member of the committee as well as the applicant, and to report back to the committee on the, the basis of those individual interviews. One of the, one of the things that we will take up, and there's an item on the agenda on this, is the, the implementation of recommendations from the Barriers to Service Committee, the report that was issued last year, which is very important. And some work was done by the prior City Services Committee last, last term, and one of the improvements, I believe, is an establishment of a, a list of questions. And you'll find that under the next agenda item that was attached to, to the agenda for, for this meeting. So you can use those, use those questions as a starter, but you're not limited to those questions, and it ensures that, you know, every candidate, every applicant who's being interviewed by us is asked roughly the same, for the same information. Yes, Councillor Labarge?
Yes, you're correct about that, Councillor Molton. We spent a lengthy time on that. A lengthy time of designing the questions we felt that was important. And yes, you can go beyond that, because they might have other thoughts that are important, that you would go ahead and write that down, whatever, whatever. A lot of the residents that I've talked to throughout the years, we used to come in person, and it made it very difficult for ones that worked, and they had to come home with their children and get ready for this meeting to come in. So we had done Zooming for quite a while, for quite a while, and they were very, very pleased with that. So these questions that have been designed are extremely helpful, extremely helpful. So I thought I got that on.
Thank you, Councillor Labarge. So as, as Councillor Labarge said, you know, in virtually any interview that you, you do, there will be questions or ideas that arise during the interview that may, that may merit, you know, further discussion. So feel free to, you know, to take the interview in whatever direction it goes. It seems productive in what we're trying to do is make sure that there's a, a good fit between the applicant and the position that he or she or they are being considered for. So that's what we're looking for. And then the, the committee members who do those interviews will report back to the full City Services Committee at our next, at our next meeting. Another, another avenue for receiving information about candidates that the, the City Services Committee last term developed is reaching out, and again, this is a recommendation from the, the, the Barriers Special Committee on Reducing Barriers to Service, is to contact the, the chairs and vice chairs of the particular board or commission that the applicant is being considered for, in, in an effort to get their input, if they wish to provide any, about the particular candidate. And that, that really started toward the end of the last term, and Laura has reached out, in this case, to both the Parks and Recreation Commission and the Arts Council, and in fact, we've received some feedback already from Brian Foot, and that will be made available to the full City Services Committee at our next meeting when we actually consider recommendations on these candidates. And then, of course, anyone could come to the meeting and express an opinion about a particular candidate if they wish to. So there's, there's kind of a wide array of opportunities for us to get to know the candidates and evaluate the fit for the particular positions. Any, any questions or comments or observations?
Okay, the.
Yes, Councillor Labarge.
I have to say, the many, many people throughout the city that I have interviewed, I didn't go through quickly. I spent a lengthy time talking with them, and they were very, very pleased with that total communication, and there's a lot of value there.
Very good. That's very good. So I think that a committee member should should interview candidates based on if anybody is particularly interested in the Arts Council or Parks and Rec, based on, you know, the, the particular board or commission that the candidate's being considered for. The other thing is to interview candidates in your, in your ward. We're all ward councillors, so it would make sense in that to, also to, to choose who interviews which candidates based on where they, which ward they live in. In this case, none of the candidates are in either Ward 6 or, or 4. So let me ask first, Councillor Labarge, do you have a preference for these, these three candidates? Which one you'd like to interview?
Yeah, I would like to interview David Ames.
David Ames.
Yep.
Okay.
Brown Hill Road, Parks and Recreation.
Okay, I'm going to ask Councillor Rothenberg to interview Kit Pedraza, if, 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 if Councillor Rothenberg is able to do that, because Kit lives in Ward 3. So, Councillor Dobbs, are you, are you willing to interview Jennifer Hollins?
Yes, I'd be, I'd be happy to do that, yeah.
And my suggestion is, you, you have on the, on the application, you've got a phone number for the candidate, so you can make the call and set up either just a phone interview or Zoom interview, if you prefer, sometime before our next meeting. Okay?
Okay, sounds great.
Does that make sense to everybody? Okay, great. All right.
Councillor Molton, did you say you were going to interview, ask Quaverly to interview Kit Pedraza?
I'm going to ask Councillor Rothenberg to interview Kit Pedraza, because Kit lives in Ward 3. If Councillor Rothenberg is unable to do that, I will do, I will do the interview.
Okay.
Okay? Okay, so those will come back to us at our regular February meeting, which we'll discuss in a few minutes.
So we're going to interview them now for the next meeting? We present them?
Yes, correct, correct. Okay, so next item on the agenda is an update on the status of implementation of the Barriers to Service Select Committee final report recommendations. I asked Laura to put on the, to attach to the agenda, the report which was made last year, the the standard question list that was developed, and then a matrix that I believe, Laura, you, you came up with this, correct?
I did.
And I, I think the matrix is very valuable in terms of looking at the specific recommendations of the Barriers Committee that apply to to the application process that we're involved with, and figuring out how to implement those recommendations. Some have, you know, some have been relatively easy to do, including the, the creation of the standard questions, as well as reaching out to chairs and vice chairs. But beyond that, there are important recommendations. As, as you know, if you've read the report, there's a lot of concern expressed about the, the process for applying for, these are volunteer positions on boards and, and commissions, was seen as opaque, not very efficient, and generally not very friendly to the applicants. And we want to, we want to fix that. So I think that's one of our, that's going to be one of our chief tasks over the next several months. And I feel this is very important. I, I first got involved with understanding the concerns about barriers to service five years ago, when I chaired the Charter Review Commission in Northampton. And while this wasn't a charter matter, it was a recommendation from that committee to the City Council that this, this select committee be set up, which, and it was two years ago, and I think their report is very valuable. So I'm committed to looking at how we can work with the mayor's office to further the recommendations and knock down some of these barriers and get people involved in municipal government who traditionally have been underserved and uninvolved. So I asked that this be put on the agenda today, simply to make sure that particularly the new members are up to speed on the report and where we stand with it. So I, I think that we'll, we'll schedule it for discussion probably at our next meeting in February, and, and and then figure out how we can proceed with with some, take some steps to to really look at how those recommendations can be, can be put into practice. Yes, Laura?
Just a note, I realized that I had meant to on page two is the recommendation that vice chairs and chairs should be notified, and I meant to update that with the status update to indicate that they are now being notified. So I can do that for the next meeting.
Yep, very good. Very good, Laura. Thank you. Any, any questions or comments or other observations about the the select committees' report on, on barriers and how it might apply to us? Okay. So the, the only other agenda item today is we want to set a schedule and a format for meetings for this term. And I mean, we set a schedule for the two years. It's not set in stone, however, so that if, you know, there may be, City Services generally doesn't have a lot of special meetings, but there may be a time when we, we would have to schedule special meetings. We know that based on the traditional scheduling of City Services that, at least in September, it conflicts with Labor Day. So we, you know, we have to be mindful of any other holidays that our meetings conflict with. I, I will say that we've set up a calendar, Laura has established a calendar that is based on the immediate past practice of having City Services meet on the first Monday of the month. There are four standing committees, three of them meet on Mondays. Finance Committee, which last term was the first term that it was sort of unbundled from the full council, taken out of the full council meetings, meets on Wednesdays. So for scheduling purposes, obviously, we want to avoid conflicts with the council committees. We want to try to stay away from, from, you know, avoiding conflicts with any of the other boards that, that, that you, Councillor Labarge, or you, Councillor Dobbs, may serve on. Councillor Dobbs, you're a member of the Disability Commission. So for simplicity, and we'll note that at 4:20, Councillor Rothenberg has joined us. Welcome.
Thank you.
For simplicity, we assumed that we would continue to meet on the first Monday of the month, and that avoids conflicts with the other two council committees that meet on, also on Mondays. The Legislative Matters, second Monday, Community Resources, third Monday. Does, do any of the other three of you have a problem with a calendar that, that assumes that we're going to meet on the first Monday of the month? No, everybody's good with the first Monday of the month. Okay. We set a meeting time at 5:00 PM normally, not today, obviously, but for the future, based on Councillor Rothen, yeah, Councillor Rothenberg's work schedule at, at 5:00. So we set a meeting time at 5:00 PM. So is that, does that seem to work for everybody? 5:00 PM on the first Monday of the month?
No problem.
Okay. Okay, so that schedule is what Laura has provided us. Obviously, if, you know, as, as we, as we go through the two years, if there, you know, if there are conflicting events, then we'll, you know, this, we're flexible people, and we'll, we'll deal with that. But I think for calendar purposes, you know, all of us have other commitments. It's good to get that meeting date set so that you can plan on that from month to month. And 5:00 works for everybody?
Yep.
Yes, that's a good time. Okay, so we'll plan then the first Monday of the month, 5:00 PM for our regular meetings through this term. Now, the other aspect of this is the, the the, how we want to be meeting, whether it's in person, hybrid, remote. So I will, I will, I'd like to hear from the other three of you about your preference, particularly for the next, let's say, through the winter. Yes, Councillor Labarge?
Yes, being on the Committee on City Service, which used to be, like I said, unbelievable. I really feel because of the way this committee is set up, and because of people working, go home and have their children, we've always had our meetings by doing Zooming, and they were happy with that, where they didn't have to come into City Council. And also too, I feel now, because of the rise of COVID, and also of the flu going on, I think it's wise that we all stay safe and for our families.
Thank you. Others, councillors Dobbs or Rothenberg, have any thoughts on format for meeting?
Um, yeah, I would just echo everything that Councillor Labarge just said. I, I think that I would prefer, at least when, in, when, during times when COVID is rising, and, and also when, and when it's winter and the weather is bad, I prefer on Zoom. So, or I guess, you know, I would say at least hybrid, I would prefer, but, but Zoom only, I think, is also a, a good idea.
Thank you.
Hello, I would say that while I typically request a hybrid so that my constituents who don't have internet can also attend, I think for our convenience, as this is more of a working group, the Zoom is fine, but I wonder if we could have a caveat that people might be allowed to submit public comment in writing that we could read, just so that everyone has a fair opportunity to be heard, if they can't have internet at the time of our meeting.
Yes, Councillor Labarge?
I, I think that's an excellent request. I don't have a problem with it, because that is one of the barriers that we do have, and we've worked on that very, very closely with City Service. So I don't have a problem with that. I think it's great.
I agree. So we would always take comment in writing that would be directed. If, if any of the members of the committee receive such comment, please, or request to submit written comment, you can reply affirmatively, and then I would have it sent to, to Laura. Okay, and then Laura will distribute it to us.
Thank you.
You file it all with the court?
Oh, criminal cases can't do it.
That's my thought. So David was just saying you weren't listed. I was thinking, I don't know that you actually use it.
Uh, yeah, I, I am listed, I mean, like the appeals court and stuff like that, like those things, like.
Do you want, oh, do you want to be added to our account? Should you file it now?
I have, I, I think.
Hot mic.
I think that Councillor Elkins was Zoom bombing us.
I think she got a phone call.
So.
Hello.
Hi.
I was just here for the show. I was just here to see what was going on.
Yes, well, welcome, Councillor Elkins. So I, you know, I think we can reevaluate our, our, our meeting practice in, in the spring, and for, I would say, for through the winter, that we will plan to meet remotely on Zoom, and that any, if, if you have any comments that are submitted in writing, please send them to Laura so that she can distribute them to, to all of us. Okay? Councillor Labarge?
Right, also too, with the state, all councillors do have a right to do Zooming up until the year of 2025 of March. If there's family problems, family illness, if for some reason there are, like councillors might have children and they need to be home to do Zooming, that is all done through the state. Also too, even with our council meetings, the same way, every meeting. Plus the fact is that say like Jeremy Dobbs, I have great concerns of what has happened recently with him being confined in his apartment for two and a half days, and I've gone a little further with that. And sometimes you can't be at a meeting because of personal issues. So it's not mandatory that you have to be there. Just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you, councillor.
And even your City Council meetings, right? When Jim Nash and I were talking, the president of City Council has to be at every meeting, even if councillors are, are President of city council has to be at every meeting, even if counselors are, are Zooming. One person has to be there and that's the council president.
Yes. So that would make our next meeting on the first Monday in February. Which is February 5th. At. At 5:00 PM. Okay, and that will be remote and, remote only and I would say the March 4th meeting. Will be remote only and then we can reevaluate. Our plan at that time. Does that make sense to everybody? Yes, Council of Barge.
Yes, also just a reminder, counselors usually have. A month of July or August off if they were scheduled for a meeting except for your city council meeting. Then you would go ahead and be not there at that meeting. And there's a little concerns here because I have noticed the past two years. And previously, we did have a choice of having a meeting. Not scheduled in the month of July or either August. So counselors, if they're going on vacation. Whatever throughout that month. If the schedule only had like two appointments on it, you do that the next month. So I just wanted to bring that up also.
Okay, thank you, Council of Barge.
And if you can recall, Marissa, Councilor Marissa Elkins bringing it up about going on vacation. And also being able to go on vacation with her family. You have to do what you gotta do.
I concur that it is important to find a balance between our civic duty. And family. So I, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
So. I want to, I want to circle back now that Councilor Rothenberg has joined us. To, we have three. Candidates for. One for Parks and Recreation and two for the Arts Council. That were referred to us. And I was hoping that Councilor Rothenberg, that you would. Interview. Kit Padraza, who was a candidate for. The Arts Council who lives in your ward.
I would be happy to.
And we talked, we talked a bit before you joined us about. Receiving information. We have. We have the applicants. The applications from each applicant. That were attached to. To this meeting agenda and in addition to that. Laura has contacted the. The chairs and vice chairs of Parks and Recreation and the Arts Council to, to provide comments about. The candidates that those will be available at the, at the February 5th meeting. And we, 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 we are. Now doing individual interviews with candidates. And try to, try to match a committee member either. Whose ward the candidate lives in or who has a particular interest in that board or commission. To do an interview with the candidates and there are, there are. Questions, standard questions that were developed in the last term. It's one of the recommendations of the, of the Special Committee on Barriers to Service. And again, Council Rothenberg, I said that don't limit yourself to those questions, but that's a good starting point. So. Council LeBarge is going to interview David Ames, Councilor Dubs is going to interview Jennifer Pollins. And you will interview Kit Padraza sometime. Before the February 5th meeting and you can do that by, by phone, you can do that by Zoom. You can do that in person if you, if you wish, whatever is convenient for you and the candidate. And I think that's very important. We want to make this process as easy as possible for the candidates. Because as the barriers committee pointed out in its report, which we'll discuss more at the next meeting. The, the process at times has been opaque. And not very friendly to the, to the candidates. So we want to try to. Knock down those, knock down those walls. Okay? So if each of you could complete those interviews and have a report ready for the February 5th meeting. We can then move on those for the, be the second meeting of the full council in. In February. I want to, I want to accomplish this. In a, in an as efficient manner as possible. I also want to give time for any, any questions that are raised during the, the process. By, by us so that we're, we're, we're taking this in a. In a both efficient and effective manner.
Right.
Council of Barge.
Yes, and also too, which we talked about, our city service committee worked very hard. On what our, our report had implemented, what we should do. And it's extremely important that we do get that total communication out there to residents. And work with them very, very tirelessly to hear about why they want to be on committees and so.
Yes. Yes, as a retired journalist, I will say the communication, good communication is essential. So thank you for that, to Council of Barge. Yes, Councilor Rothenberg.
Um, did I miss anything about the auditor?
You did not miss anything about the auditor. Now, the auditor is not on our agenda. Today because there is a seven day period. We can't, we can't. Consider a, a referral for, for a. In this case, it's a staff, a staff person within a seven day period of it being referred. That's why it is on, it will be scheduled for. February 5th meeting. Am I correct about that, Laura?
That's correct.
So there was no discussion of the auditor. It was referred last Thursday. That will appear on the February 5th agenda. My expectation is that. Because that is a department head level staff position that we will actually do an in-person interview. With the candidate at, at the February 5th meeting. Uh, yes.
Would it be possible to think about. Reaching our interview beyond just the applicant for such an important role, like perhaps to current staff members in the department or former staff members in the department?
The department. What, which department?
With the auditor, just to get sort of almost like collaterals, just about the job duty, about. The current role and who's got it at the training or any experience, just so we're getting a really complete kind of thorough. Dive into that role. I feel like the auditor is really, really, really important.
Uh, okay, I, I see. Council of Barge.
Yes, and we know for a fact that appointment is through the mayor's office. And I think what I'm hearing from Corvelli, you're asking about getting some input. From the employees working in that office, correct?
Yes.
I don't have a problem with that.
And maybe not, maybe not identified by name so that no one feels uncomfortable, but just so we can have a better sense of city services.
Uh, well, I will, I mean, these. Yes, I was just about to say that, Council of Barge. Thank you. I will check with the mayor. Laura, did you have your hand up?
I was just going to say that Finance Director Nardi has already reached out to try to confirm the date and time of that interview. And so my assumption is that she's going to accompany, normally the mayor introduces department heads, but I thought. It might be that Director Nardi is going to come with her and would have some. It would be able to talk about the auditor's office, of course, but it's duties.
I, I, I've seen that correspondence to confirm the date on which the, the candidate would be. Can, considered by city services and I so, I do expect. Director Nardi to be at that meeting. I will also inquire of the mayor to see if she. Will attend that meeting as well. Okay. Any other? Oh, okay, we also want to. So we're, we're set on meeting dates. We're set on remote meetings. At least through the winter and we'll take that, we'll take that up again, probably at the April meeting. And I think that completes. Our agenda for today. Is there any new business? Yes, Council of Barge.
I was just going to question Board Three Counselor Corvelli. When you're stating, which I've heard you say a couple of times here. That you do have residents who do not have the internet. Are you looking at Walter Salvo's, like the McDonald House and so forth? I was wondering, it's just, I'm just thinking. Of in the community room, and I've been there many times. Which one is larger? Is it Walter Salvo's? I think so versus the McDonald House?
Yes, Walter Salvo.
Right, if there was possibility of setting up a room like they have at the senior center. Where people are taught how to use the internet and so forth, that is something to look at. Also where they could go to the senior center with the computers there. But maybe it's something we can look at with talking with IT on this of how we accommodate these people. That are living in Walter Salvo's and the McDonald House and the Fruit Street Apartments and so forth. It's the same way up in Florence too.
That's a great idea. I think the good news for the Salvo House is that the, one of the groups did get, I believe in ARPA grant. And they are going to be equipping that community room with internet if they haven't already. But we could certainly do a survey of the other houses and work with Cara and see if there's anything we can do. I think even Director Mish was interested in trying to help with that too, however we can. Maybe Representative Sabadosa, that would be great.
Really.
And the Forbes Library, they have those little hotspots. So that'd be a great project.
And plus we need to look even at Forbes Library, people with disabilities. You know, so we got these large community rooms and we all know for a fact, people would really learn. Want to learn how to go ahead and get on the internet. That's nice.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for your concern, Councilor LeBarge. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
And my congratulations to whomever is our chair and vice chair.
You, you are, you are, you are looking at. I am serving as chair and Council of Barge is serving as vice chair, so.
Excellent. And I'm so glad. This is a wonderful council. I'm really glad to be serving with you all.
Well, I, I appreciate that. Thank you. So that concludes business on the agenda. Is there any new business? Anything else that people want to talk about today? Yes, Council of Barge.
I'm honest, I, I think we have a very good group here and I think we're all going to put our heads together. We're going to move forward and do what is right and go in the right direction.
I, I think that is a very, very well said, Council of Barge. That is a terrific goal for us to. Keep in mind. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, well, I know that both Councilor Rothenberg and Councilor Dubs have another meeting coming up. This will give you a bit of a break between meetings. So I think a motion to adjourn is in order.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, Laura?
Counselor Molton.
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Dubs.
Yes.
And Counselor Rothenberg.
Indeed, yes.
Okay, thank you all.